My name is Keith Bynum. I'm the Assistant Director in charge of our Compliance and Monitoring Division. And in essence, what we're, what my division is responsible for is to make sure that everyone handles on both sides, our side as well as the recipients of all the federal dollars, are making sure that they spend those dollars correctly. So that's kind of what I do in a nutshell. But I want to welcome you here on behalf of our Director Neil Radcliffe, who has had to attend another event this evening. So we are fully staffed with Grants Management, who is responsible for putting on this event this evening. So I'd like to give them a big round of applause because it's a lot of work and you'll see what we do, what they do, in order to put on this event to discuss the Consolidated Plan. So before we get started, I'd like to acknowledge the Councilmember Mike Laster, who's in the room. And Councilmember is the Chair of the Housing Committee. So we have to go before him, before his committee, make sure that what we're doing is done correctly and that the City Council will approve those projects as we move forward.
Just let me say thank you for coming out to District-- no, I think everybody can hear me. I'm usually loud and obnoxious most of the time anyway. Thank you for coming out to District J. We're glad to host you in the Center of District J here at our multipurpose center. I want to thank all the great staff of Housing Community Development Department. It's a joy to work with them. I hope that you get your questions and your information answered this evening. If we can be of service to you from the District J staff, don't hesitate to give us a call. Thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you. I don't recognize any other members of City Council or any City Council staff, is anyone? Alright, so no one else is here. We're gonna go and get started. We don't want to occupy too much of your time, but we want to make sure you get a lot of information. We have a lot of information to share and we want to make sure that all your questions will be answered. Before we bring up Melanie Barr, I want to also let you know that if we have any language issues, we have an interpreter, Nadia Garzen, will be here to do interpretation, interprets, will interpret for us. So if you have any questions, just raise your hand and we'll make sure she's there. But we're gonna go on and get started with the purpose of the public hearing and we'll turn it over to Melanie Barr, who is our Administrative Manager in charge of our public services.
Thank you Keith. So the purpose of today's public hearing is to review the Consolidated Plan, the Analysis of Impediments to Fair Housing Choice Process, discuss preliminary data findings, and hear from you about your community needs. ATDD, which is the Housing Community Development Department, administers four grants funded through the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. We commonly refer to this as HUD. Our funding priorities include affordable housing, supportive services, infrastructure, neighborhood services, economic development funding. HD receives entitlement grants and special grants, and today we are focusing specifically on our entitlement grants. Our entitlement grants are as follows. Community Development Block Grant, which we call CDBG, finances housing, public services, public facilities, and improvements in economic development. Our Home Program, which is simply home, promotes public-private partnerships to expand the stock of affordable housing opportunities for renters and homeowners. Our Housing Opportunities for Persons with AIDS, which we commonly refer to as HAPWA, funds the provision of housing and social services for persons infected or affected with HIV and AIDS and their families. The Emergency Solutions Grant, ESG, finances the provisions of shelter and services to homeless populations and those most at risk of becoming homeless. Our primary initiatives are to eliminate chronic homelessness. And chronic homelessness is defined as a person who has been continuously homeless for a period of one year or more, or a person who has experienced four episodes of homelessness in the last three years. We vitalize communities, foster community economic development, enhance quality of life. Now each of our entitlement grants, you're required, in order to access them, you're required to meet income levels for eligibility. So this is, the program income levels limits are an 80% area of medium income, and as illustrated for eligibility, a family of four must have an income limit of $53,300. Now this slide here is a map that illustrates the low to moderate income areas, biceps block groups. So I'd like you to pay attention to the areas that are shaded in the light blue. Those represent areas occupied where at least 51% of the residents are at or below 80% of the AMI, the area of medium income. This next slide shows you our entitlement grants from year 2010 to program year 2014. This is our grant allocation. And as you can see, in 2010, we received about $33 million for the CDBG program. And our last allocation was $23 million. That's a 31% reduction over the last five years. Our home allocation suffered a more significant reduction of 49%. We received approximately a little over $14 million in 2010, and in 2014, that went down to $7 million. Now the HAPWA program had an increase of $3 million over the last five years. And again, that's the house opportunities for persons with AIDS. And our ESG, Emergency Solutions Grant, stayed relatively the same. And now I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Brenda Scott.
Thank you Melanie. And thank all of you for coming out this evening. This is your time. My name is Brenda Scott. I am the Deputy Assistant Director of Planning and Grants Management, the division that's responsible for all things of public hearing in the Housing Department. We're also responsible for the Consolidated Plan and all of its component parts. The Analysis of Impediments, which is moving toward being called the Assessment of Fair Housing, the Needs Assessment Survey, the Language Assistance Plan, the Citizens Participation Plan. All of those are component parts of the Consolidated Plan. That's when it's done every five years. And then the Annual Action Plan, which is the update of the Consolidated Plan. I always like to take an opportunity to say thank you to the staff for their commitment and diligence. Andrea Jones, who is our outgoing Public Hearing Coordinator, she's going to take on the role as the Fair Housing Administrator. And our plan is to move Millie Walker into that position. Peggy Colligan, our Special Grants Manager, is here with us. Mary Itz, sitting on the end, she is the Consolidated Plan Coordinator, and I'm so glad. And who else is here from Planning and Grants Management? Or if you're here from the city, we appreciate your continuing support. But I'll go with the slide here. The AI, the Analysis of Impediments, today, tomorrow, the Assessment of Fair Housing. What is an Analysis of Impediments to Fair Housing Choice? It is both an identification of and a review of the problems that affect the rights to fair housing choice. It is identification of and a review of all the public and private policies that we can find, the practices, procedures that affect fair housing choice. And ultimately, all of this becomes our basis for our fair housing planning, which outlines the actions that the city expects to take to eliminate the barriers thus enhancing fair housing choice. Barriers to fair housing choice are actions, omissions, restrictions that prevent or have the effect of preventing or restricting the availability of housing choices based on protected classes. Next slide. The Fair Housing Act prohibits discrimination against any of the following protected classes: race, color, national origin, religion, sex, familial status, handicap, or disability. Now we've done a number of surveys throughout the past year, and usually when we ask people to name the protected classes, they usually will say income. But we always like to reiterate that income is not a protected class, although there is data to indicate that if your income is low, then you're limited in your fair housing choices. The Fair Housing Act prohibits discrimination in the rental or sale of housing, discrimination in terms, conditions, privileges, services, or facilities of housing. It prohibits making, printing, or publishing discriminatory advertisements, and it prohibits representing that housing is unavailable to a protected class when housing is actually available. We have a new rule that became effective in February of 2012, the Equal Access Rule. Within this rule, HUD prohibits discrimination in entities assisted by HUD or insured by the FHA based on sexual orientation, gender identity, and marital status. Now there are a number of methods that we employ in engaging community participation here in the City of Houston. They are information sessions, community needs surveys, discussion groups, key informant interviews, public hearings, fair housing forums, and our draft plan comment period. And if you or your organization are interested in getting involved or having the department come out to engage you, to make a presentation, please contact the name on the PowerPoint, Andrea Jones at Houston, Texas. We are excited about the efforts that we have put forth toward conducting the first Community Needs Assessment Survey. Since I've been in the Housing Department, and that's been a long time, we typically will procure consultants to do this for us, but we've notified and estimated 100,000 people about the survey. The notice will end on December the 15th. We've received about 1,500 surveys, respondents ranked activities in the order of importance with affordable housing being number one, infrastructure improvements the second, neighborhood facility improvements and neighborhood services number three, economic development number four, and supportive services number five. Moreover, next slide. 81% of the respondents agreed that Houston needs more affordable housing. 77% agreed that affordable housing should be available in neighborhoods throughout Houston. The top three affordable housing needs in the City of Houston: financial assistance for homeownership, repair of homeowner housing, repair of existing rental apartments. Respondents ranked the top three groups in greatest need of affordable housing with elderly being one, low and moderate income persons two, and the homeless three. Thank you.
My name is Mary Itz, and I'm with the Planning and Grants Management Division with the Housing Department. And I'll begin talking about reviewing the data that we have looked at for our Consolidated Plan and our Analysis of Impediments. First, the population statistics. Houston is the fourth largest city in the country, and we have over 2.1 million people living in the city limits of Houston. The Houston metro area is the most racially and ethnically diverse large metro area in the nation. Almost a quarter of the city's population, five years and older, speak English less than very well. And almost half of the city's households are low and moderate income households. This is a breakdown of race and ethnicity population in the Houston area as well as the City of Houston. In the City of Houston, about a fourth of the population is white alone, and a little less than a fourth of the population is black alone, and 43% are Hispanic and Latino. This is a map of race and ethnicity within the City of Houston. Blue represents African-American and black, and white represents, is represented by green dots, and Hispanic and Latino are represented by red dots. The next map shows persons with limited English proficiency. One dot equals one person who speaks English less than very well. Spanish in the blue is the most, represented the most in this population, followed by Vietnamese and Chinese-speaking people. Next, HUD suggested looking at racially, ethnically concentrated areas of poverty, which are here highlighted in black outline against our low and moderate income areas. These are census tracts with a non-white population over 50%, and also they have 40% of the individuals living in these census tracts are living below the poverty line. So these are high poverty and high majority-minority census tracts. This next slide is about special needs. We have about 23,000 people living with HIV/AIDS in the Houston area. Houston area ranks the 12th highest in the nation for HIV. About 9.8% of Houstonians are people who report having a disability, with over half of these people reporting having difficulty walking or climbing stairs, and one-third of these people reporting cognitive difficulty, which is remembering, concentrating, or having difficulty making decisions. Metro Lift, which serves disabled people who can't ride metro buses or metro rail without assistance. Metro Lift provides transportation to about 5,000 people every weekday on average. The City of Houston's unemployment rate is about 7.9% according to the 2013 census data, and one in four people in Houston over the age of 25 have not completed high school or its equivalency. Almost 20% of Houston families are living below the poverty line, and one in three children in Houston are living in poverty. 26% of Houstonians are living in areas which are called food deserts. Food deserts are identified by the USDA, and these are census tracts which are low-income communities, and they also have low access to grocery stores. So low-income communities are people who make, are households that make less than 80% AMI, or these are census tracts that have a poverty rate of over 20%, and about a third of the people living in these areas are further than one mile from a grocery store. The Texas Medical Center is the largest medical complex in the world with 7.2 million visits per year. Houston has about a third of its residents uninsured. 44% of the Hispanic-Latino population in Houston is uninsured, and about 55% of persons who didn't graduate high school are uninsured. This is a map showing the federally qualified health clinics as well as the city health clinics, shown on top of where the low mod income areas are in the city. The Coalition for the Homeless does a point and time count each year in January, and last year, they counted about 5,300 homeless people that night in January. If y'all are interested in participating, volunteering, contact the Coalition for the Homeless because right now they're looking for volunteers for January 2015. About 43% of the people surveyed were staying in places that are not meant for human habitation, which means they're living under bridges or outside somewhere. 57% surveyed were staying in emergency shelters and transitional housing. And a significant portion of the homeless population is, has mental health issues or substance abuse issues. This count represents an annual decrease from last year of 16% and a 37% decrease since 2011. This decrease probably has something to do with the amount of permanent supportive housing units that the city has created with the help of the Housing Department, the City of Houston, the Coalition for the Homeless, and housing and service agencies throughout Houston. There was a 28% increase of these units since last year and an 81% increase of these units since 2013. I will now introduce Andrea Jones, who will discuss our housing statistics within the City of Houston.
Good evening. I'm Andrea Jones. I'm in Senior Staff Analyst with the Housing Community Development Department. I'm going to be speaking with you about housing. First, rental housing. The number of multifamily units permitted, that means the numbers of units that were built or within 2009, was 1,718 units. Now if you look at 2013, that increased by 9,030 units. So that's pretty good. The rental occupied vacancy rate is 8.5%. That means that we don't have a lot of vacant units within the City of Houston for renters. Next slide please. Rental housing. Renting in the greater Houston area, so a two-bedroom in Houston goes for $926. The income needed to afford a two-bedroom is $37,040. A three-bedroom is $1,264, and a four-bedroom is $1,563. If Houston is considered 49, 1.1% low mod income, then you can see why there might be a problem with people being able to afford housing. 45.2% of renters are considered to be cost burden. That means that they spent more than 30% of their income on mortgage payments or rental payments. That's considered house burden, meaning that they can't save, or they can't do certain things in order for them to be able to have a very vast quality of life. 51% of renters have one or more housing problems. That basically means that that person does not have a kitchen or a bathroom. Next slide please. So homeowner housing. The number of single-family permits, that means the number of houses built or the number of houses that were permitted to be built. In 2009, that was 2,896, but then you see an increase in 2013 of 5,337. The owner occupancy vacancy rate is 1.7%. That's pretty good. That means that they are occupied. Next slide please. Homeowner housing. In 2013, single-family sales price in the greater Houston area, the median cost for a home was $180,000. That's a 9.4% annual increase. Average housing cost is $248,491. That's a 10.3% annual increase. 26.8% of homeowners are considered cost burden. That goes back to the fact that they spend more than 30% of their income on their mortgage. 30% of homeowners have one or more housing problems. Again, that means they do not have a working bathroom, plumbing, or a kitchen. Next slide. Now, this slide here would demonstrate what we see as a problem. Change, the change from 2009 to 2014 in the Houston area. The housing costs are growing at a faster rate than the income. In Houston, from 2009 to 2014, the median income in Houston in 2009 was $63,800. In 2014, it was $63,600. But then the median wholesale price went up from 2009 to 152,000, in 2014, 196,000. So that means that a 22.4% increase in housing costs versus a 4.2% increase in income. Average housing statistics. Houston has a total of 902,153 housing units, of which approximately 39,000 are restricted affordable housing units. HCD has over 6,400 affordable units in its portfolio. Approximately 1,900 affordable units in HCD's portfolio were in their affordability period during the next five years. That means that those will no longer be available for people who are 80% or below the median income. The housing, the Houston Housing Authority manages 3,337 public housing units and administers 17,750 housing choice vouchers. However, they had 83,743 families apply to the Housing Choice Foster waitlist in August of 2012. So that's huge. Next slide please. So if you look here, the affordable housing units in Houston Housing Authority Housing Choice Voucher, this map basically shows the number of, number of housing units for poor households and census tracts, and then also the Housing Choice Voucher. So if you see here in the red, you're basically see affordable housing units, and then the racially, ethnically concentrated poverty. If you look, they kind of follow each other. You see them here. Next slide please. Mary for Fair Housing. Thank you.
I'm going to talk a little bit about the Fair Housing data sets, two important Fair Housing data sets. The first is the HUD Fair Housing Complaint Data. When people have a complaint or they feel like they have been discriminated against, they can go to HUD and file a complaint, and HUD will do an investigation. In the past nine years, there were 792 fair housing complaints filed within the City of Houston against City of Houston complainants and also closed within the past nine years. The largest amount of these complaints were for racial discrimination and also disability discrimination. Most of these issues identified were related to rental housing. And just so you know, residents can file complaints through HUD, through the Greater Houston Fair Housing Center, and also through the Texas Workforce Commission. The next slide shows through time how race and disability are the highest issues that come through complaints, and national origin has kind of decreased within the past nine Next, we took a look at home mortgage disclosure data, so HMDA data. The Home Mortgage Disclosure Act requires financial institutions to publicly disclose the race, the sex, and the income of mortgage applicants. So we wanted to look at conventional home purchase loans. So these are the applicants that applied for home mortgage loans through private lenders. The race and ethnicity of all the applicants who applied for home loans, 4% were black in the past five years, 12% were Asian, and 69% were white, 13% were Hispanic, and 74% were non-Hispanic. And if you think back about--
And if you think back about, um, the slide we showed about the percentage of, um, people living in the area, um, there's a, there, uh, is a disproportionate amount when you compare the, the two. Um, the most common reasons for a denial of a conventional home loan was credit history and debt-to-income ratio. The average annual denial rate within these past five years was twelve point six percent. And, um, we wanted to look at if income wasn't a factor, so we looked at, um, upper-income applicants to see how the denial rates would be. And for upper-income, black, African-American applicants, the denial rate was eighteen percent. For Asians, it was eight percent. For whites, it was eight percent. For the Hispanic, upper-income applicants, it was thirteen percent the den- the denial rate, and for non-Hispanics, it's eight percent. I will pass it back to Keith, who will discuss what will happen next. Thank you.
All right. Just to kind of recap where we are, for those of you who just, uh, arrived, what is the Consolidated Plan? And that's why we're here this evening. The Consolidated Plan is to document that we have identified local community needs. It includes the housing and non-housing needs, shows goals and objectives set for the five-year period, prioritizes and guides all our activities. It required, it is required by HUD to receive communities, communities entitlement, identifies issues that lead to housing discrimination, and the analysis of impediment for fair housing choices, fair housing choice. Next slide. This shows the pro, shows the process of what happens for the entitlement grads. And if you start from the top, work your way around, you see determining the needs, setting those priorities, determining the resources, and it goes dark. Okay. Uh, setting the goals, administering the program, and evaluating, uh, performance through the caper. But all of that is tied to the citizen participation. So, you have to have, we have to have participation so we know what directions we should be going through, uh, so we can put together the best plan for the city. If we go back and, and, and you heard some of the numbers that were given, and you heard that our funding has been reduced over the last few years, we have, we have to do a whole lot more with a whole lot less, because the needs don't go away just because the money is reduced. So, we have to do a lot, and we are being very creative. Uh, this team is thinking out of the box, I hate that term, but we are doing that. We're thinking out of the box, we're being more creative, we're leveraging the money more, bringing in more partnerships. So, we're trying to do a whole lot more with a whole lot less, so we can have the biggest impact that we can have on the citizens of this community. We're going to take a brief pause and, uh, for about three minutes, and when we come back, we will do, uh, allow you to make comment. Uh, we will have, if you'd like to sign up and speak, uh, please, uh, sign up at the table in the rear. Uh, this is not an answer, uh, question-and-answer session. Your, your comments will go on record. We will then publish that, uh, the responses to your comments if there are some questions in that. So, we're going to take a brief pause for three minutes, and then when we come back, we will take your questions. All right. We're going to do our public comment. We'll ask, uh, the individuals who have signed up, and you'd step to the microphone, and you can make your comment. You have a three-minute time limit in which to do that. And, and Mary is going to have the clock and the bell. And for those of you who watch, uh, the City Hall meetings, you know, Anna Russell. Your time is up. Please be seated. All right. We'll get started, and our first speaker is Kathleen Armby.
Hi. Thank you, um, for coming out to District J. I was just telling the council member that my husband and son and I used to live in an apartment, um, right behind Fiesta back in the seventies, so I feel like I'm back home. Um, I wanted to thank you for your past support, um, for the Spark Program. We just came off of Spark Week, the full week before Thanksgiving Week, and dedicated six parks. And I'm, um, very thankful to Lester and a whole cadre of people from Housing and Community Development that came out, including your director, Mr. Radcliffe, that came to the dedication at Pine Shadows Elementary and Spring Branch ISD. And, um, you talked about, Mr. Bynum leveraging funds and how important that is for everybody, and it's especially important for nonprofits like Spark. And just to give you an example, at Pine Shadows Elementary, we leveraged the, um, CDBG funds with, um, not only five thousand dollars from Spring Branch ISD, but also, of course, the land, which is, um, Spring Branch ISD property. And then the school district will be maintaining the park after that. The community raised over five thousand dollars. Harris County Precinct Four put in five thousand dollars. The management district put in ten thousand dollars. And then, um, we had several churches that gave to that particular, um, park, and then we raised money from corporations and foundations. So, we think we do a great job at leveraging your funding. Um, for, um, the council member, I want you to know that, um, we are about to sign a construction contract for Pine Point Elementary Spark Park. And so, um, that's a District J school that, um, we are going back to, and, um, we're excited about that. And so, I have brought our new calendars, um, which I think we have flooded your department with, and, um, but if anybody here in the room would like one, and then, um, our coloring book also. So, thank you, and happy holidays to everybody.
Thank you. And please get one of those calendars, because it'll identify, I believe those calendars identify the locations of various parks, because you need to go by and see those parks. They, they do a fabulous job.
And actually, out of the twelve, there are twelve schools that are featured, nine of these schools got CDBG funding.
All right. Our next speaker, Councilmember Mike Laston. You just signed up. You don't want to speak? You sure you don't want to say how great you are? All right.
I think I did that earlier. I was going to miss it, I'm sorry.
That's all right. Thank you very much. And our next speaker is Steve, uh, help me with your last name. Mike, with Chinese Community Centers.
Good evening. I, as you said, uh, my name is Steve Michaelman. I'm Deputy Executive Director, Chinese Community Center. And, uh, if I could share a secret with those of you here, I'm not Chinese. So, um, sometimes a package is, is, is more than just the, the wrapping on it. We're a very, uh, reunited way agency that serves a diverse, uh, community of Houston. All our core constituency is, uh, Asian-American, Pacific Islander. Uh, we want to thank you, number one, for being out on this sort of wet evening. I know it's a requirement to come out in the community, but it takes real people to do that, so I thank you. And I thank, uh, HCD, uh, and the City of Houston also for providing support to the Chinese Community Center in past years with, uh, the building of our gymnasium several years ago, and, um, hopefully you will continue to assist as we expand our services in the future. What I want to say tonight, I'll keep very short and very simple. Uh, Houston is a great city. We like to talk about being the energy capital of the world and having a great medical center and a job generator, all of which are true, but this is a diverse city, and that comes with strengths, but also with needs, that's sometimes are hidden by, you know, the glitz of everything we like to talk about. So, I encourage you and the city, as y'all go ahead and, and craft the plan, is to keep in mind that we are a diverse city, as, as you all have talked about, with people speaking many languages and having many needs. So, not only I want, uh, would encourage you to keep that in mind, to make sure that the services that we offer, um, are, uh, open and inviting to the, the broad community, but also, as we go forward, uh, as with the rest of the nation, we are an aging community, so that we also keep in mind, uh, serving the elderly with housing and other services that help create that quality of life throughout the lifespan. So, thank you very much, and good evening to everybody.
Thank you. And I agree with you, I'm getting old, so I'm going to do another slide. All right. Our last speaker, and then you still have a chance if anyone else would like to sign up and be Speaker, but our last speaker is Jane Cummins with HART.
I'm not that tall. So, good evening. My name is Jane Cummins. I'm the Executive Director of Educational Programs Inspiring Communities. We're a Houston-based nonprofit organization, and we're known for the HART Program, which is a program that is funded through CDBG Public Services and provides education, job training, and employment opportunities for low-income adults who have intellectual disabilities. I wanted to start this evening by thanking you for such the detailed presentation and statistics. It was very informative. I took pages of notes, and I'm very interested in going back and reading them and learning more about all of the issues that are facing our community. It was very, very helpful and informative. One of the things that I hope that you'll consider in drafting the next Consolidated Plan is highlighting something that was brought to light in the last Consolidated Plan, which is, even though there are hundreds of thousands of people with disabilities in our community, and you mentioned a third of those identifies having some type of cognitive impairment, the number of organizations serving that community is very, very small. And that's something that was identified in the last Consolidated Plan, and I think it continues to be a need moving forward. Uh, we see the numbers of people with cognitive disabilities really growing, and particularly in younger people, as more and more diagnoses are coming down for people with autism and other cognitive disabilities. And as those groups then age, we're going to continue to see those numbers grow into the future. The organization where I work, HART, is one of the few organizations that works with people with cognitive impairments, and particularly, we work with low-income adults who have intellectual and developmental disabilities. We really greatly appreciate the funding that we have received, and I just want to tell you some of the great things we've been able to do with those dollars, and that is, we've been able to provide job training since the program started to over two hundred people with cognitive disabilities, and that has resulted in jobs, um, for those individuals, where they're all earning minimum wage or higher. In just this year, over one hundred thousand dollars will be earned by that group, and the, you know, that's almost a dollar-for-a-dollar match in a way, with the funds that have been invested into the program by the city. And these are real jobs, so they're working at all of the Texans games, they're working at all of the Rockets games. In fact, we had a group that was working last night at the Rockets game, and we'll have a group at every Texans game. So, thank you very, very much for your support. We really appreciate it, and we hope that these types of programs will continue to be important and remain a priority in future consolidated and action plans. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Our next speaker, is it Matisha Tate?
That's great.
All right.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Matisha Tate of State D, and I'm a proud member of the Houston Public Library. We have been truly blessed with being able to have CDBG funds and to have so much support over the recent years. Um, as many of you may know or have seen, one of our most popular team members is our Mobile Express. It's this really large RV that's been gutted out, and it has fourteen computer stations, and we take it throughout the City of Houston and provide services. And we're able, through that delivery and through CDBG funding, to be able to provide services to many of the people that you have spoken about in your presentation, such as those that have, you know, issues with literacy, people that are homeless, people who have health disabilities, um, kids, and people of all ages. We go to senior citizen centers, schools, and anywhere you can pretty much set up, we go. So, we've been very, very fortunate to have support, and it makes me feel proud to be not only a member of my team, but to do what I do every day. So, I just wanted to say thank you, because it gives me a sense of accomplishment, as well as my team members, to know that every day that we go out, we're providing services to people who, in most cases, would not be able to receive those services any other way. So, I just wanted to simply say thank you, and to give you all kudos, because I know that it has to be extremely complicating and hard to do what you do, but to know that we are very, very appreciative, and the people that we serve are appreciative as well. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. And if you haven't seen that movie, you need to see that. That is a parting joy of the library system. Our last speaker, Samuel Home with MHMRA.
Uh, again, I'm Samuel Home with MHMRA of Harris County. Stands for the Mental Health Mental Retardation Authority of Harris County. And, uh, I've been doing housing for quite a while and aware of, uh, a lot of the programs the city has to offer and funding. Uh, I just want to say that our organization or entity is very supportive of any organizations that are able to get funding for mental health services and development of individuals. So, we really just want to, uh, see that, uh, their application be considered for funding for housing and services. And, uh, we know you guys do a great job. We try to help and get out the information about the available resources y'all have, and, uh, we know that one group in Kingwood got some funds from you guys for one of their affordable housing projects, so we're very supportive of them doing that. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Uh, this is the last call, if anyone else would like to say something, sign up. Uh, let me give you the calendar for the two thousand fifteen Consolidated Plan, the Action Plan, the Action Plan and the AI. Uh, this month, as, uh, tonight, we did our first public hearing. On next, on next Tuesday, that's December the ninth, we will be doing our second public hearing, and that is at the, at the Neighborhood Resource Center. And the flyers are on the table, so it's near downtown, so we will be hosting that one. Is that at six-thirty as well?
Yes, it is.
At six-thirty as well. Our total, uh, two thousand fourteen through April of two thousand fifteen is the Solicited Input and Develop Plan. That's what we've been doing. Uh, from March to April of two thousand fifteen, uh, we will do two, uh, additional public hearings. Uh, March, uh, through April of two thousand fifteen, we will begin to review our draft of the plan. And then in late April, early May of two thousand fifteen, we will, the plan will be submitted for a City Council approval. And with that approval, uh, somewhere on or about, uh, May fifteenth of two thousand fifteen, we will submit that plan to HUD. And that is, uh, I believe, last year we were ahead of schedule.
For the past three.
For the past three years, we have been ahead of schedule, so.
She's not been managed.
Since, since she has been managed. Wow.
As she's talking about that.
That's right. That's right. That's, uh, there you go. Um, on the table in the rear is a, a survey, so please, complete the community need survey. There are several ways you, uh, you can participate. Uh, complete the survey today, you can complete the survey online, and that online is, uh, as you can see up here, www.houstonhousing.org. Uh, and then you can download in-print copies of the survey, and you can share that with your community, and, uh, you can do that again at www.houstonhousing.org. Surveys are available in English, Spanish, Vietnamese, and Chinese. The surveys are due back in the Housing Department by December fifteenth. Once again, they're due back by December of the fifteenth. So, with that said, yes, sir?
One question. You've given us a great presentation this evening. Is that online? Is that information that you've done on the, uh, from the computer this evening online that people can print off if they would like to have that?
Yes.
So, they just go to, what, the City?
Surveys are already out there, and we will put, uh, the television presentation of this hearing out there, and we will make the PowerPoint, the power presentation available to, um, after the second public hearing.
Right.
So, if, but if the people, if the public wanted to go in and get a copy of that, they would go to your website of the City of Houston, is that correct?
Right.
And you'll have some tab up at the front that directs them to that?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Yes, we make it, we're trying to make it as available to everyone, uh, in any format. So, please, uh, for those of you who want to share that survey, please get extra copies and share that, or go to the website and download that. Once again, on behalf of our director, on behalf of our, uh, the other members of the staff of Housing and Community Development, Grants Management, I want to applaud them again, because they are totally responsible for putting on this event. We want to thank you so very much, and we would say good evening to you. Thank you.